It's so different having all the chairs set up.
Yeah.
Oh, I didn't know.
All right. Good evening. Today is Tuesday, July 6, 2021. This is a, this is the reorganizational meeting for the Board of Education. Do I have a motion to open the meeting? Cynthia, second floor, all in favor? All right, we're actually going to go right into executive session to discuss personnel matter, and then we'll be back out at 7:30 for the regular meeting. Do I have a motion to go into exec session? Cynthia, second floor, all in favor? All right, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, good evening. Today is Tuesday, July 6, 2021. This is our reorganizational meeting of the Board of Education. We actually opened the meeting at 7:00, went into exec session, and we just came out. So the meeting is already opened. So we've done to convene the meeting. Let's do the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, get right into it. This is a very thick, very thick agenda we have here. It's our reorg meeting, so there's always a lot on here, but it should go pretty quick. So let's just get right into it. First thing we have to do is do some appointments. So first is to appoint a district clerk. We need to appoint Robin Dunn as district clerk. Do it from our seat, right? So resolved that upon recommendation to superintendent of schools, the Board of Education, and Takahoe Union Free School District hereby appoints Robin Dunn to the position of district clerk to serve at the pleasure of the board for the 2021-2022 school year at an annual rate of pay of $11,410. Do I have a motion? Torres, second. Cynthia, all in favor? All right. So now I need to swear you in, right, Robin?
Yes.
Okay, so repeat after me. I, Robin Dunn.
I, Robin Dunn.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York. Is that too much? Is that too much?
Swear to support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the district clerk.
The duties of the district clerk.
For the Board of Education, the Takahoe Union Free School District.
For the Board of Education of the Takahoe Union Free School District.
Town of Eastchester.
Town of Eastchester.
County of Westchester.
County of Westchester.
State of New York.
State of New York.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
All right, thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we have oath of, oath of office to newly elected trustees. Actually, yeah, Cynthia, you can do that, right?
Yes.
Okay. So do I need to swear, do anything there or no?
No, because she's already been elected.
Okay, go ahead.
Oh, I didn't realize I didn't do this. Yes. Please repeat after me. I, Cynthia Tate.
I, Cynthia Tate.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To support the Constitution.
To support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of trustee.
The duties of trustee.
For the Board of Education.
The Board of Education.
Of the Takahoe Union Free School District.
Of the Takahoe Union Free School District.
Town of Eastchester.
Town of Eastchester.
County of Westchester.
County of Westchester.
State of New York.
State of New York.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability. Thank you.
All right. Congratulations again, Cynthia.
Congratulations.
Okay, and next is to nominate and elect the board president. So how does this work? Do I have to get a nomination?
Yes, you need a nomination.
All right.
Well, who are you nomin, you have to nominate?
Nominate Pete Casson to be president?
All right, does it get a second or anything? Second? All right. All in favor? Am I doing this right?
Yes, you are. Perfect.
All right. You have to swear me in?
Yes, I do. Please repeat after me. I, Peter Casson.
I, Peter Casson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To support the Constitution.
To support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of president.
The duties of president.
For the Board of Education.
For the Board of Education.
Of the Takahoe Union Free School District.
Of the Takahoe Union Free School District.
Town of Eastchester.
Town of Eastchester.
County of Westchester.
County of Westchester.
State of New York.
State of New York.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. And now we have to nominate and elect a vice president. I would like to nominate Laura Benke. Second. All in favor? All right.
Please repeat after me. I, Laura Benke.
I, Laura Benke.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To support, to support the Constitution.
To support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of vice president.
The duties of vice president.
For the Board of Education.
For the Board of Education.
Of the Takahoe Union Free School District.
Of the Takahoe Union Free School District.
Town of Eastchester.
Town of Eastchester.
County of Westchester.
County of Westchester.
State of New York.
State of New York.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my abilities. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Congratulations. Thank you. Okay, now we need to appoint a district treasurer. Resolved upon recommendation to superintendent of schools, the Board of Education and Takahoe Union Free School District hereby appoints, uh, Bieta?
Biata.
Biata Grabowski to the point, to the position of treasurer to serve at the pleasure of the board for the 2021-2022 school year. Do I have a motion? Torres, second. Flory, all in favor? All right, great. And lastly, appoint a claims auditor. Resolved that upon recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education of the Takahoe Union Free School District hereby appoints Michael Oliveria to the position of claims auditor to serve at the Board of Education for the 2021-2022 school year at an annual rate of pay of $10,790. Do I have a motion? Cynthia, second. Flora, all in favor? All right, great. All right, so next up is comments by the board. We have a pretty lengthy agenda, so maybe we won't do too much of that tonight. But I'll just say quickly, I just wanted to thank my fellow board members for giving me the, the trust and the honor of, of serving as the board president again. So thank you very much for that. Other than that, I don't have any other comments. Does anybody have any comments?
You're welcome.
All right, good.
Yeah, you're welcome.
We had to fight for it, but one.
Couldn't give the job. Couldn't give it away. All right, next is comments by the superintendent.
So congratulations, Mr. Casson, Ms. Benke.
Thank you.
And tonight I do have a few comments to make. Also, good evening to the board trustees, colleagues, parents, and community members. The highlight of the end of the school year was our graduation ceremonies. We graduated our high school seniors with the pomp and circumstance that they deserved. Our student and faculty speakers did a great job summarizing the hard work put forth by all our seniors this past year. We also took a moment to remember Dr. Yozurlo and his contributions to our district. The ceremony did not focus on the pandemic. Instead, we looked forward. However, the sight of all our graduating seniors on the front steps of a building that had been closed a year ago was a symbol of our communities and our towns and our state's perseverance. We also celebrated our kindergarten, fifth graders and eighth graders in their moving up ceremonies. Again, our building leaders, students, faculty, and student speakers rose, rose to the occasion, creating a memorable gathering. Yet, a year of twists and turns ended on a positive note, a very positive note. Last week, our ESY teachers, our special education teachers that support our summer program, and staff welcomed our students for the first day of our extended school year program. This program had 19 students coming in for the full day program, and several were tuition students, and nine students coming in for reading and other related services. The S Y program in our district is in district, as it was last year. We were one of the few districts that had in-person special education programs last year, and this year we also do. And our Takahoe teachers and our staff greeted the students. We're so happy to be back and are providing quality services to our students and a joyous environment for learning. Also, our new director of special education and student services, Dr. Sweeney, was there to welcome all our students and staff back. And we will look forward to the next five weeks of a great educational experience for those students. This summer, we extended our academic support program through the summer in the areas of reading and math. These summer support services take place twice a week for 45 minutes in small groups. We are offering the model remotely to accommodate our families over the summer. Students can sign in from any location, and the instructors are collaborating with families. Groups are no larger than eight students. Students are grouped together to target interventions in specific areas. We encourage collaboration with families and base our interventions on the use of data. We are using iReady to gather assessment information and to offer independent practice for students when they are not in class. Their progress will be factored into the development of lessons. Students, again, have been grouped based on data from iReady about the skills that they require. This means that all the groups have various grade levels represented. Some students may be in groups with students who are older or younger. In order to target students' academic needs, students will be working very specifically on the areas that they need. Because we are doing this for the learning gaps that we have seen due to COVID-19, and with our extra money that we have received from the federal government, this is where we are targeting some of this money into the summer support program. So approximately 140 students were offered this additional support. We first offered it to all students with IEPs and all English as a new language learner. So the students who weren't getting ESY in summer school were offered, because ESY is required by the IEP, were offered that program. The program extends for six weeks. If a family requires access to a device over the summer, we have worked with them to provide them access. So that, we made sure that each student had a device. If a family needs any help, we are collaborating with families also. And we're supporting, again, high-quality assessment and programming this summer. I also wanted to talk about universal pre-K because I know I sent out that blast to people, and there are questions. So all school districts this year in New York State, and I, it was a federal program, right, where they got that money?
Um, yeah.
So they, everybody got money for pre-K. And as I wrote in the email blast to families, that Takahoe did not unfortunately get the same amount of per-student money. And the reason for that, when I dug a little deeper, was because anybody who had a pre-K program before, for some reason, and we haven't had one in years, got less money per student. Other districts felt even with them getting more money than us, many districts have not started this because they don't think, you know how, those of you who pay for preschool full day know how incredibly expensive it is. So I advocated for more money for, for our school district. There was a press conference in maybe April, May, and with Amy Pollan, who has been really on the forefront of this, because some people asked how we could do this. And I specifically, that's a Journal of News article on it, spoke about Takahoe and that it's hard, you know, for all families, middle-class families, the price for preschool is like more than going, and I actually said this, than going to like state university price. I mean, it's just, it's just incredibly expensive. So the other thing we advocated for was universal pre-K for everybody. And that advocacy will continue throughout the year. I hope that we get letter-writing campaigns and all that. Because universal pre-K is, in New York City, universal. So in New York City, they take the real meaning of what it is, and all three and four-year-olds get free kindergarten. But don't move to New York City, because we're going to try to do that here, and you know we have great schools. So what, when, we put out a, a proposal, and this is another way you can do pre-K, and I've been involved in other districts that have done this, where you write a letter to all the preschools in the area, and you say, okay, partner with us. And that preschool becomes where you are doing your universal pre-kindergarten program for three and four-year-olds. Many districts did that, and they didn't get a response. Thankfully, we did get a response from somebody in Takahoe. And what's holding it up, I've been working with the mayor on getting them opened to do this program, and she's been very, very helpful. And we need to get New York State, Faith Sparce, to also help with this, and New York State to approve us for this. I am pretty actually positive that this will happen at this time, and I didn't want to go forward, because actually I heard that, you know, that it's moving along at least through the village very quickly, and I want people to be aware. Now, because it's not for everybody, you know, how many slots did we say? Twenty?
Thirty-nine.
Oh, thirty-nine, more. So twenty-nine. So thirty-nine is a lot of slots if we get this. And it's full day, but there will be, if we get it, again, I'm not promising, but I, we could always go to Plan B, actually, too. There's kind of a Plan B. But if we get it, hopefully we get it. It might start a little later than the beginning of September, but when I tell, I will keep you all posted, and I will make sure that this gets out through the town of Eastchester and the village of Takahoe, because we also know that, and through pre-Ks, because we also know that there are some parents that aren't in our school district yet and may not know about it. So I'll work closely with the PTA also to get this word out. And we should know in a couple of weeks, actually, really pretty soon. So I did want to alert the community for this. You know, again, I know some of you have already paid for preschool, but maybe the down payment isn't as much as you'll save with this. So I'm sure a lot of people will be interested. And again, it's a very fair, I mean, I know you've done this before with a lottery when you had a pre-K. It's a very fair process. So we'll keep you updated on that. And I know that there have been questions. Hopefully, there are some people in the audience, but hopefully also people are watching from home or they will know to click onto the meeting. Thank you all again. I really appreciate the board and all our community administrators and faculty support. We do have one faculty member who's getting appointed tonight, so we're very glad that you're here, too. And again, thank you very much.
All right, great. Thank you. That's good stuff. All right, so next is our comments by our business manager, which is our new business manager, here for the first time joining us. Thank you very much. We're excited to have you, Faith.
Thank you. Congratulations to the board president and vice president, and to Ms. Tate on your term. And I just want to say that it's an honor to be up here and serve this amazing, amazing community and with fantastic leadership. So I'm very excited. Thank you.
Great. We're happy to have you. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So that brings us to our first recognition of the audience. Before we do that, though, I did forget something, and I remembered when you said in your comments. During my comments, I did want to say something and recognize Dr. Yozurlo, who passed away last month. He actually passed away right before our last board meeting, but we didn't find out about it until the day after. So we missed the opportunity to, to recognize him at the board meeting. So I just wanted to, to recognize his service. He was the superintendent of this district for 13 years, 1998 to 2013, no, 2011, excuse me, 2011, which is the longest-running superintendent that I'm aware of. I don't know if it's in the history of this district, but it might be. So he was, he was an important leader, did a lot for the school district, and it was sad, sad to hear about his passing. So I thought we would just maybe take a moment of silence just to recognize, recognize him. Okay, thank you. And Dr. Goodman said some nice words about him, too, at the graduation, which was great. So, okay, first recognition of the audience. Does anybody want to speak about anything on the agenda? Agenda items only on this first.
Agenda items only, or the business items? Do we have to wait to ask?
No, no, so the, the first recognition of the audience is for anything on the agenda, and then the second recognition of the audience is at the end, if anyone wants to say anything about anything at all.
Hope it's business of the board.
You, you can speak about it?
Yep.
Sure.
Good evening. I think I have to say my name first. So I'm Gia Calachico, 83, Overlook Ave. Good evening, Dr. Goodman and board members. I would like to open by saying thank you to the entire Takahoe School District for an amazing year in spite of many difficulties and restrictions. Takahoe has really been a standout and a strong example of leadership this past year. There are many hard decisions to be made before school begins in September, the two most important being mask and vaccine mandates. If New York State allows school districts to make their own decisions, I'm here to ask you that you protect the medical freedom of parents and make both optional. For the past year, children have been required to wear masks in school. Hundreds of those same children immediately remove their masks as soon as they leave the school buildings and go to their friends' houses or in other people's cars, hang out, go to parties, play sports, and work, all without masks. In spite of this, Takahoe had a very low infection rate among students, and most school districts report little to no spread in schools. We have heard for so long that kids are the least infected and that COVID does not greatly affect children, and that is why schools were able to open full-time. Additionally, the Westchester Department of Health has recently stated that masks are no longer required this summer for camps when gathering indoors. So why now do we need a requirement to go back to masks in September, when kids are spending the entire summer unmasked indoors? However, I feel it is a parent's right to decide what is best for their child and their family. If you are comfortable wearing a mask, then do it. If you are comfortable not wearing a mask, then don't wear it. The second major decision is vaccination. Again, please do not take away a parent's right to choose what is best for their child. Many people have valid reasons for wanting to vaccinate, and people who don't want to vaccinate have equally valid reasons. You do not know every child's medical history. These children have not gone through growth spurs, puberty, or completed their brain development. We do not yet know how this shot will affect children with developmental delays and/or learning disabilities. As we all know, the shot is not FDA-approved. There are no longitudinal studies, and while the technology that created the vaccine may have been researched, we truly have no idea how the RNA-based shot will affect those who receive it in the future. On May 22, The New York Times began reporting myocardia, and now there are news reports of the proteins being replicated in ovaries. Many parents are not willing to chance these and other unknown side effects in their children. We don't know the long-term effects of COVID, but we don't know the long-term effects of the vaccine either. I am not anti-vaccine anyway. I have vaccinated my children without a second thought, without research, without a question. However, those vaccines have been around for years. They are tried and true and have gone through vigorous testing. As for new variants, they have been detected in almost every state, yet New York State numbers continue to drop. As of June 27, there were only 16 cases reported in Westchester County out of a population of approximately 968,000. Just this past, past month, the World Health Organization also stated that teens do not need to be vaccinated. Please do not take away a parent's right to choose what is best for their child. A school or a board cannot act unilaterally, unilaterally, even in educational matters such as school evaluations or providing special education students, special education services to students without parental consent. Parental consent is always needed. Respect has to be on both sides. If you want to vaccinate your child, then that is your choice, and it should be supported. If you don't want to vaccinate your child, that decision should also be supported. Many parents fear, feel fear, anxiety, and stress over their child getting COVID. However, parents feel that same fear, anxiety, and stress about vaccination. I would say even more so, because that view is dismissed and disregarded. People who don't want to vaccinate are called selfish, self-righteous, or that they don't care about the community, and that notion needs to be taken out of the narrative immediately. Takahoe has led the way this past year with enviable leadership. We, all my friends in other school districts were very jealous of Takahoe and how we opened, how we stayed open, and the amazing job that this board in particular did under Dr. Goodman's leadership. Please continue to do so by acknowledging and supporting the thoughts and feelings of all families. Again, if the board is able to choose in September, please do not take away our rights as parents and our medical freedom. Please make masks and vaccines optional. Thank you for your consideration and the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. I, I assume, by the way, you're referring to item 19 on the agenda, the business of the board, about the resolution.
Okay.
Right? Because, because the qualifier for you to speak up here right now was about an agenda item. So I'm assuming that's the item you're speaking about. Am I correct?
I assume it is, well, yes.
Okay, okay.
Yep.
Yeah, so just to be clear, for those at home, there is a, there's an item on the agenda about a resolution regarding mask mandates. So I'm assuming that's what you're, you're speaking about, right? Anybody else on that, on that issue, or any other issue on the agenda?
Good evening. My name is Lisa Jell. I hope everyone's doing well as we start the summer here this evening to address the resolution on the agenda, item number 20, and ask that our school district continue to urge the New York State Department of Health to immediately lift the indoor mask mandate for pre-K through 12th grades in our school, given that the current scientific information that masks cause more harm than good, that our infection rate is 0.4%. And a slight adjustment from what the numbers are that are listed on the agenda, 64.9% of our Takahoe residents are vaccinated, 68.2% of our Eastchester residents are vaccinated, and 70.2% of our Bronxville residents are vaccinated. An overwhelming 77.3% of the entire Westchester County population right now who are 18 and older have already had at least one dose of a vaccination. And also, coupled with the fact that members of our own school population have already recovered from COVID, have natural immunity, which for some reason is being discounted altogether, that 77.3% number doesn't include 13.44% in the county who have already had COVID and have natural immunity. Should Takahoe Union Free School District be given the authority and the discretion to establish guidelines specific to the masking of our children inside of school that the Board of Ed and superintendent allow for the parental and student choice, should students want to mask or not? The majority of my comments here are fairly dense, but it's important that I rely on science and not just my opinion. The available evidence suggests that masks played relatively a small role, if any, in reducing the virus's spread across the United States over this past year. In late May of 2020, a study reflected that mask mandates did not slow the spread of COVID. This study included the total number of cases in 50 states from March 2020 to March 2021, and focused on the efficacy of wearing masks during smaller and larger major surges. The study concluded that there is no correlation between mask mandates and slowing the spread of coronavirus. Mandates induced greater mask compliance, but did not predict lower growth rates when community spread was low or high. Not only were masks found to not stop the spread of COVID, but the risks were not taken into consideration when the mandates were instituted. The risks of wearing masks include nosebleeds, prolonged use more than four hours per day promotes facial alkalization, and inadvertently encourages dehydration, which can enhance a bacterial infection risk. Masks increase headaches, sweating, and decrease cognitive precision. Masks obscure nonverbal communication and interferes with social learning in children. Masks obscure nonverbal communication. I said that. Masks can distort verbal speech and remove visual cues to the detriment of individuals with hearing loss. Another study conducted in November of 2020, published by the Annals of Internal Medicine, found no statistically significant difference in COVID-19 cases between mask wearers and non-mask wearers. The most recent findings that were just published on June 30 in JAMA, which examined the carbon dioxide levels of 45 children in Europe, all in good health, ranging in age from 6 through 17, with an average age of 10 years old. The clinical trial is titled "Experimental Assessment of Carbon Dioxide Content in Inhaled Air With or Without Face Masks in Healthy Children," claimed that the case for the government to mandate school children to wear masks is weak. The authors of the study noted that normal open air has approximately 0.04% carbon dioxide by volume, and the German Federal Environmental Office states that the limit for closed rooms is 0.2%, and anything higher is unacceptable. The study found that the carbon dioxide levels of children wearing masks after three minutes, just three minutes, averaged more than six times the maximum carbon dioxide exposure. The results of the clinical trial said carbon dioxide levels tended to increase the younger the children were, and the seven-year-old's levels measured at 25,000 parts per million. Every single child in the study recorded at least three times the appropriate healthy levels of carbon dioxide. The researchers said that high carbon dioxide levels can lead to impairments attributed to hypercapnia, which is a buildup of carbon dioxide in your bloodstream. Acute hypercapnia can cause delirium, paranoia, depression. Acute hypercapnia can cause delirium, paranoia, depression, and confusion. Severe hypercapnia can cause hand tremors, sudden muscle jerks, seizures, headaches, nausea, vision problems, and varicose veins. The researchers concluded, "We suggest decision-makers weigh the hard evidence produced by these experimental measures accordingly, which suggests that children should not be forced to wear face masks. Moreover, it is simply a myth that masks prevent viruses from spreading." The overall evidence is clear: standard cloth and surgical masks offer no protection against virus-sized particles or small aerosols. The size of a virus particle is much too small to be stopped by a surgical mask, cloth, or bandana. A single virium of SARS-CoV-2 is about 60 to 140 nanometers, or 0.1 microns. The poor size in surgical masks is 200 to 1,000 times that size. So wearing a mask to prevent catching SARS-2, or a similarly sized influenza, is like throwing sand at a chain-linked fence. It simply doesn't work. All parties mandating the use of face masks are not only willfully ignoring established science, but are engaging in what amounts to a whole-school clinical-experimental trial. This conclusion is reached by the fact that face masks use COVID-19 incidents are being reported in scientific opinion pieces promoted by the CDC and others. The fact is, after reviewing all of the studies worldwide, the CDC found no reduction in viral transmission with the use of face masks. Additionally, children have been repeatedly shown not to be drivers of this contagion. I've spoken to pediatricians in this district who told me during COVID, they were simply as slow in their business as they could ever have been. It is well-accepted that children have a statistically zero chance of dying from COVID. The CDC shows K-12 mortality rate from or with COVID is .0003. Any intervention, especially one that is prophylactic, must cause fewer harms to the recipient than the infection. Since children have the lowest death rate to COVID, the cost-benefit of requiring children to wear an investigational face covering with emergent safety issues is especially difficult to justify. Even Anthony Fauci was very clear that asymptomatic transmission is not a threat. He stated, "In all of the history of respiratory-borne illnesses of any type, asymptomatic transmission has never, ever been the driver of outbreaks." Furthermore, the mandatory masking in schools is a major threat for a child's development. It ignores the essential needs of a growing child. The well-being of children and young people is highly dependent on the emotional connection with others, not to mention the fact that this requirement promotes the idea that masks can prevent and treat a disease. I find this practice deceptive, especially as the U.S. is suffering from an explosion in urgent mental health-related cases, as COVID is receding and our children have been hit particularly hard. I once again stand here to ask you to follow the science, to consider our children, and to allow the children and staff in our school district the option of choice. If you recall, within a period of three and a half days, we amassed at least 260 signatures, all in favor of dropping the masks, for the most part. Our community clearly supports choice, and many of my peers here in attendance likewise support the choice. Thank you for allowing me an opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Lisa. Anyone else? Let me just say, there's a lot of work, obviously I went into that, Ms. July, but if, I hope you're, how long is yours?
Not very long. I basically wanted to reiterate some of the things that have been pointed out.
We do have a three-minute, a three-minute sort of limit on this, which we don't usually enforce, but.
Well, I think we all benefited from.
But I didn't want to cut you off, Lisa, because I know you did a lot of work on that, so.
I just wanted to underscore and reiterate and add a little anecdotal evidence from my son, Joseph Scott. My son is also Joseph Scott. Joseph Scott, generally known as Scooter, though. So anyway, I highly recommend, if you have not read the JAMA study, as it came out on the 30th and maybe haven't come across it, that you take it under very serious advisement. Because my son talked about the fact that when he would come home from school that he was losing his ability to focus because of the increased amount of carbon dioxide caused by the masks he was wearing. I also said, just as, of course, as a matter of general, as a general guideline for the welfare of our children, that you take a very good look at this study. We're talking about the preeminent, peer-reviewed, medical publication in the world, and they say it is a bad idea to mask our children because of the long-term brain damage, the inability to actually learn, which is what they go to school for. Carbon dioxide kills brain cells. We all know that. That's how people die in car garages. It's no different here. It's carbon dioxide. You're killing brain cells. These are our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else?
I'm going to try not to repeat.
Okay.
I'll be a repeater. The last time, I'm Maria Wardwell, and the last time that I spoke, I was really a wreck because I wasn't really prepared, and I was very surprised by how everything was going. So I'm more focused on the mental health of our children. Joy, anger, fear, surprise, sadness, contempt, disgust, these are the basic building blocks of emotional experience, and they're written all over our faces. American psychologist Paul Ekman devoted his life's work to studying nonverbal emotional expressions across cultures. All of humanity expresses these seven core feelings in ways we universally comprehend. We depend on facial expressions to know and understand each other. Mask mandates have already begun to show psychological repercussions for children and adults, children being the highest concern. There's extensive scientific research. The idea of persistent use of face masks harms the cognitive development. We've heard this. I don't want to repeat. The effects of persistent use of face coverings on human psychology has been studied for decades, actually, decades. I found that to be very interesting, and has been shown to result in adverse mental trauma. American psychologist Philip Zimbardo in 1969, unbelievable, 1969, about evidence of deindividualization as a result of wearing face coverings. His studies show a reduction of a person's threshold for expressing inhibited behaviors, thus affecting their expression of output behaviors. Kurt Riesler from the American Journal of Sociology calls collective insecurity "the palpable disregard for the development of children in addition to the infringement of America's God-given liberties." Mask mandates can only be explained as an excuse to openly oppress individuals within this free society. Getting children used to the idea of having to cover their faces is not normal, and children know it. So portraying it as the new normal is emotionally, mentally, and physically harming to children everywhere. It is up to us, everyday citizens, to protect the children within our community from losing our universal, nonverbal communication and emotional connection. For all of us, wearing masks reduces the information we have available to express ourselves and understand others. And I will say, as a mother of teenagers during this period of time, I couldn't feel more strongly about the mental health of our teenagers and our high school students. I'm sure middle school as well. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Sure.
Microcell. First, when I walk, when I walk in here, I have to thank you because I saw faces, and I think that's very important. It made me smile inside, and our children need to see the same thing. It does have an emotional issue with people all across the spectrum. Second, if you're looking at the effectiveness of masks, we do have examples. You have North Dakota, South Dakota. North Dakota had mask mandates. South Dakota never did have mask mandates, and there's no difference in the numbers as far as infections, mortality, and the like. So that's, that's a real case study from the beginning we can look towards. So that's about the masks. I don't believe they work. You have evidence here. I won't repeat it. I agree with everything that was said. As far as the vaccine, many things are written on both sides of it. One, I don't even like to call it a vaccine because it's not. It's experimental gene therapy. That's the way it works. It's not a traditional vaccine. Second thing, the inventor of the RNA technology was just pulled off of YouTube today, and I believe Facebook, because he stated that if you're under 25, the risks from the vaccine are greater than the virus, which is true, from all the health risks. And the voices are silenced in this country right now, and he's one of them, and that's just happened today. There's others. So look at the information in places other than the normal sources, and I think you guys have done a great job over the, over the last year, and I'm confident that you'll do the same about our children. If you want to wear a mask, wear a mask. I don't think they work. If you want a mask, knock yourself out. If you want to get vaccinated, get vaccinated. If you don't, you don't. If you do, you shouldn't worry about it because you're vaccinated, and if you don't, you're on your own. And that's, that's just my belief. Take care of yourself, stay in good health. There's a lot of facts about vitamin D, zinc, you probably all heard about it, that has a bearing on the health if you do get the virus, how sick you get, or you get, you're better on your own. Our children have very, very strong immune systems that are, that are working against this very effectively. Older people, not so much. It's very dangerous for them. So there's a different course of action for children in school and children, and people that are 65 or 70 and above. And we've got to adjust, and I think you guys would, would make the right decision. But thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mike. All right. Anyone else? Nope? Okay. So we will move on to our consent agenda. Motion to approve consent agenda items two through 51. Do we have a motion? Laura, second. Any discussion? There's a lot of items in there. I know we all looked it over ahead of time. Does anybody have any questions or any concerns about any of those items? Nope? Good. All in favor? All right. Let's skip way ahead to business of the board. First item, approve pupil personnel agreement. Resolved that the Board of Education approves a consultant agreement with Zycrone Industries for billing Medicaid-eligible services for a fee based on 15% of federal Medicaid revenues that the district is entitled to retain based on approved claims for services provided to special education classified students beginning July 1st, 2021, ending June 30th, 2022, not to exceed $10,000. Do we have a motion? Cynthia, second. Laura, any discussion? All in favor? All right. Prove a purchasing agreement. Resolved to approve a purchasing services agreement with Educational Data Services in the amount of $3,010 for the 2021-2022 school year. Do we have a motion? Laura, second. Teraz, all in favor? Any discussion? No? All in favor? Prove a capital project accounting agreement. Resolved to approve an agreement with Fiscal Advisors and Marketing Incorporated for capital project accounting and state aid services for the period of July 1st, 2021, through June 30th, 2022, at a rate of $210 per hour. Do we have a motion? Cynthia, second. Laura, any discussion? All in favor? Okay. Prove a contract extension. Resolved to extend the contracts from the following lowest responsible bidders for the 2021-2022 school year at the same rates as 2020-2021. Electrical bid, Scotty, $15,025. Air conditioning and refrigeration services, John Henry's Heating-Ventilation-Air Conditioning Incorporated, for $12,259.50. Minor carpentry repairs, Morgan Park Company, for $12,233.44. For roofing, J. Salvatore &amp; Sons, for $822.50. Heating services, Olico Heating Corp., for $65,490.15. Plumbing, Joseph Lombardo Plumbing Heating &amp; Cooling Incorporated, $8,335.46. For snow removal services, JMA Landscaping, for $29,260. And facilities management services, A&amp;A Maintenance, for $18,390. Do we have a motion? Cynthia, second. Teraz, any discussion? All in favor? Okay. Prove an athletics merger. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the interim director of athletics and the superintendent of schools at the Board of Education. The Tuckahoe Union Free School District hereby approves the sports merger with Bronxville Union Free School District for varsity boys ice hockey for the 2021-2022 school year. Do we have a motion? Laura, second. Teraz, any discussion?
I just wanted to make a quick comment on that, if you don't mind. We know, because there's a couple of mergers, right? And I just wanted to just comment that I, I knew, I knew about the ice hockey because my son did do that one year, and I'd like to see for the, like, communication with parents because I have, I don't think parents really know that they have these options athletically to do things. I think it's great that Bronxville, we collaborate with them. I know we had tried at one point to do Eastchester with lacrosse, and, but this is a great opportunity for a small district to participate, really, in ice hockey and swimming and.
Girls' softball as well.
They come to us for the softball, I think. So it's, I just want to recognize that that's a great opportunity, and it would be, I think it'd be good for the.
Maybe we could work on, like, promoting it or recruiting for it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know.
I think there's only two in the hockey when I did. I know there's a couple, yeah. So I don't know. I know how they, people find out about it. I know that I did because I think I had asked, but I don't know that we get that much communications about that. So just a comment.
Okay. Any comments on that? No? Okay. All right. Do we vote on it already? No? All in favor?
Sorry.
Okay. Prove another athletics merger again with Bronxville. Resolved upon the recommendation of the interim assistant principal and the superintendent of schools at the Board of Education. The Tuckahoe Union Free School District hereby approves the sports merger with the Bronxville Union Free School District for varsity girls' softball for 2021-2022 school year. Do we have a motion? Laurie, second. Laura, any further discussion? All in favor? Okay. Extend the contract. Resolved to approve a one-year extension of the food services contract with Aramark Educational Services LLC through 2021-2022 school year at a 3.2% CPI. Do we have a motion?
No motion. I'll wait for discussion.
Okay. Motion? Do we have a motion?
Motion, yeah. Motion, yeah. For the extension of the contract.
Discussion. Yeah. This is, I know this is something that's been brought up by us quite a bit. Go ahead, Laura. You have something to say? Go ahead.
Do we have to? Is there any other food supplier besides Ickey Arma?
I would, Faith, let me answer that, but I think I kind of know the answer to that.
I know, but I'm going to bring it up anyway.
Every time.
Because the kids hate the food. My kids literally cry when I tell them they have to buy lunch. They're like, wait, what? No! They won't eat, so.
So this is the fourth year of our five-year bid that we did with Aramark, and they were the only bidders on our contract and have been for a while now. So, yeah, they are the only ones right now.
Is that because of our price point?
It could be because of the size of our district that, you know.
It's not enough money.
So we did, we did some exploration into this like two years ago, maybe three years ago, we, and we had a committee, and we, there's just not a lot of options. And one of the other, it's frustrating because I'm very disappointed as well with the quality of the food. I think we could do a lot better, and with the, the new cafeteria being built, it would be awesome to have a brand-new food service at the same time that that cafeteria opened, to go along with the nice new cafeteria. I think there's a couple of things we learned. Number one, we only got that one bidder, and that was, I think, largely due to, to our small size. And also, and correct me on this, Faith, I'm probably not going to say it right, but there is an economic piece to it where we qualify for federal subsidy that makes the school lunches very affordable. But so remember, we do have a lower-income portion of our student population that needs to be able to afford school lunches. So to branch off to Aramark and go to somewhere private, it's doable. The cost per, per lunch is going to be significantly higher, or at least somewhat higher, and could become a significant burden to some, some of the population in our school district. So it's a tough conundrum that we're in because I think we're all looking to do something better there, but there's just not a lot of options.
I have a question. Do we, for the people that are eligible for school lunch, we, the district absorbs that cost, correct?
No. The federal government and the state reimburse us for those meals.
Does everybody have to pay the same, so, does everybody have to pay the same amount per meal?
So this year, during the pandemic, the meals were free for everyone. Typically, it would, there is a paid meal rate, and then anyone who is free or reduced gets the free meal. We get a certain amount reimbursed to us for paid meals, but the federal government and state will subsidize the free meals and the reduced meals. We happen to have a very favorable contract with Aramark right now, so the school lunch fund is doing well.
So that, that.
Could we pay more, I guess, is what I'm asking. Like, I, I don't even, what does it cost to, I don't even know what it costs.
So paying more, that would be.
Like, per kid? Like, the kids who pay? Like per kid, like the kids who pay, could they pay a little more to get better quality?
That would be a material change to the contract. We already have, um, very high quality specs built into our contract. So that would be, any changes would be a material change and we'd have to go out to rebid, which would result in higher costs to the district where we would be probably paying more than we're charging the students, um, for the meals. So, and there is no guarantee that Aramark would bid or anyone else.
So the contract we're in now is good for another year?
Um, for the twenty-one, twenty-two and then the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. And then we would have to rebid.
Yeah.
So it's two years.
Yeah. This is not something we're going to solve, obviously, in this discussion tonight. I, I, I do think it was something I was going to bring up as a topic at our retreat. I think it is, we should try it again and, and maybe create another committee and really dig into this and look and see if we can find some solutions. We do have a, a healthy fund balance, but there's, it's not a good idea
Yeah, but that can't be used for
You, you can't use a, you can't use a surplus to offset recurring costs. Because it's just not, it's not a good, you know, it's not smart to do that because it will eventually
Why don't we merge with another district like we just did for athletics?
Maybe, I don't know. So I, I, I think, I think it's worthy of, of, um, exploring again, maybe, maybe kicking it over to the health and wellness committee and, and making it a priority. It would be nice to figure out a solution to this and have something lined up for the next contract, which would line up nice with the new cafeteria. I don't know why you're saying that, but I just kind of like the idea of having something new and, when that comes along. So, um, tough one, but I, I, I think we should try it again. I think we should take another shot at it. There's gotta, there's gotta be a solution, so. Okay. We didn't vote on that. All in favor? If you don't want to, we're not going to have a contract then.
Have your food.
Get up there.
Yeah. Yes.
Go back to item number seven. I think I missed that one.
Did I miss it?
I think you did.
Softball.
Softball.
Well, there was three. Yeah, there was three. I did miss it. I'd actually, I missed the one in between. I think it was number six that I missed.
I think you missed the swimming one.
I missed number six. Okay. So be resolved upon the recommendation of the interim director of athletics and the superintendent of schools at the Board of Education, the Tuckahoe Union Free School District hereby approves the sports merger with Bronxville Union Free School District for varsity swimming for the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two school year. Do we have a motion? Cynthia, second. Teres, all in favor? Are you okay? I'm, I'm pretty sure I did this all before. Okay. So that brings us to nine. Resolved to approve an extension of the summer transportation contract with World Coach Lines for the period of July first, two thousand twenty-one through August thirty, two thousand twenty-one at a total anticipated cost of sixty thousand eight hundred and twenty-one dollars and thirty-four cents. Do we have a motion? Laurie, second. Teres, any discussion? All in favor? Okay. Number ten, extend the contract. Resolved to approve an extension of the food services contract with H and B Consultants LLC for the period of July first, two thousand twenty-one through June twentieth, I'm sorry, June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two at a total cost of four thousand two hundred and eighty-two dollars and eighty cents. Do I have a motion? Teres, second. Laura. Which one is this now? This is, this is for?
Yeah, no, I was going to say.
But it must be, it's only four thousand. It must be only for some of this.
They, they are consultants that oversee Aramark and make sure that they're, um, living up to the contract and meeting the standards and, um, following the proper procedures for the national school lunch program.
I feel like maybe
Are they tasting the food too?
Well, they
They're required also because of federal subsidies, they're required.
They, um, yeah. Yeah, they're, they, um, they oversee our, they help us in overseeing the program because we are so small.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. All in favor? Okay. Appoint a board attorney. Resolved to appoint Keenan Bean as board attorney for the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two school year for the retainer fee of sixty-five thousand dollars for general counsel work, which shall include three hundred and seventy hours of service and a retainer fee of twenty-seven thousand dollars for negotiation services, which shall include one hundred and fifty-five hours of services. Anytime spent on matters that fall outside either retainer arrangements, I'm sorry, arrangement, will be billed at two hundred and twenty-five dollars per hour for services performed at the attorney, by the attorneys and a hundred and twenty-five dollars an hour for services performed by power legals. Do I have a motion? Cynthia, second. Laurie, any discussion? All in favor? All right. Prove workers' compensation cooperative plan. Whereas there is a Southern Westchester, Westchester Schools Cooperative Self-Insurance Plan for Workers' Compensation pursuant to section one nineteen dash O of the General Municipal Law. And whereas Tuckahoe Union Free School District is eligible for membership in that plan. And whereas the school district has elected pursuant to subdivision three of section fifty of the Workers' Compensation Law to become a self-insurer as to the workers' compensation claims against the district. And that pursuant to subdivision four dash A of said section fifty of the Workers' Compensation Law, notice of such election has been filed with the chairman of the Workers' Compensation Board Self-Insurance Section. And whereas the Board of Education has made an independent investigation of the plan and renewed the plan document, municipal cooperation agreement. And has concluded that it would be in the interest of the school district to participate therein. Now therefore be resolved that the school district enter into membership in the plan pursuant to section one nineteen dash O, I don't know if that's O or zero, but whatever, of the General Municipal Law. And be it further resolved that the board of, the board president and the superintendent of schools be and hereby are authorized and instructed to execute the plan document, municipal cooperation agreement on behalf of the school district. And be it further resolved that the business, the business manager be and hereby is designated to represent the school district as its trustee under the plan. And that the treasurer be and hereby is designated to serve as an alternate trustee under the plan. And be it further resolved that the custody of all joint plan monies by a single fiscal officer under the plan and be, and be, be and the same hereby as approved. Do we have a motion? Have you understood that? A motion, Cynthia. Laurie, any discussion? All in favor?
Repeat it, Faith.
You can go back and read it later if you want, Teres. Point and order. Resolved that the Board of Education of Tuckahoe Union Free School District hereby appoints Bonadilla, Bonadillo and Company, LLP as the external auditors for the school year commencing July first, two thousand twenty-one and ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two. Do I have a motion? Cynthia, second. Teres, any discussion? All in favor? Accept a donation. Whereas Tuckahoe Union Free School District has hereby, has been here informed of a donation to be made to the district from the Tuckahoe PTA. And whereas the district would like to accept such donation is hereby, it is hereby resolved to accept a donation of a hundred dollars in honor of Ms. Liliu's retirement from the business office to be used towards the purchase of a cricket machine and other similar equipment for the Tuckahoe High School Entrepreneurship Program. And a donation of a hundred dollars in honor of Mr. Sandy Garuffie's retirement from the Tuckahoe Middle School High School to be used towards the purchase of band equipment. And a donation of a hundred dollars in honor of Ms. Evelyn Johnson's retirement from the Tuckahoe Middle School High School to purchase book, books, media for the forthcoming media center, center. And a donation of a hundred dollars in honor of Ms. Allen, I'm sorry, Alice Benash, Benash's retirement from the Tuckahoe Middle School to be used towards the purchase of books for the English department. Do we have a motion? Cynthia, second. Laurie, any discussion? Thank you very much to the PTA. It was very nice of them to do that.
Very nice.
All great donations. Do I have a, uh?
Terry's softball.
Yeah. All in favor? All right. Resolution authorizing piggybacking. Whereas Tuckahoe Union Free School District pursuant to the authority granted in General Municipal Law, Article five A, section one oh three desires to participate in Omnia Partners. Whereas section one oh three of the General Municipal Law permits Tuckahoe Union Free District to make purchases of apparatus, materials, equipment or supplies or to contract for services related to the installation, maintenance and repair of apparatus, materials, equipment and supplies. May make such purchases or may contract for such services related to the installation, maintenance or repair of apparatus, materials, equipment and supplies as may be required by Tuckahoe Union Free School District therein through the use of, of a contract let by the United States of America or any agency thereof. Uh, any state or other county or political subdivision or, or district therein is such, if such contract was to let to the lowest responsible bidder or on the basis of best value in a manner consistent with this section and made available for the use by other government entities. Whereas Tuckahoe Union Free School District desires to participate for the purpose of fulfilling and executing its respective public government, governmental purposes, goals, objectives, programs and functions. Whereas Tuckahoe Union Free School District has reviewed the benefits of participating in this program and based on this review has conducted the program will provide the best value to taxpayers of this Tuckahoe Union Free School District through the anticipated savings to be realized. Now therefore be resolved, the Board of Education, the Tuckahoe Union Free School District is authorized to participate in purchasing from Omnia Partners for the period of June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two. That the superintendent or designee is authorized to register for the effective purchases from Omnia Partners program on behalf of Tuckahoe Union Free School District. Do we have a motion? Laura, second. Cynthia, any discussion? Can you, can you explain a little bit?
Yeah, I was just going to say.
What that is? I think I know what that is, but
So, um, Omnia is, um, the Prince William County Public Schools, um, they're not in our state, have a bid with, um, Omnia. And it allows us to use, um, Amazon as a vendor. There are a lot of times where we can purchase cheaper off of Amazon, but because we're limited to where we can purchase from, um, we couldn't always use Amazon, even though they were cheaper. So by having this resolution, we're allowed to use the Omnia bid and go right to Amazon and get sometimes things at a cheaper price. It's nice.
All right. All in favor? All right. We're almost there, folks. We're getting there. We're getting there. Approve an independent contracted services agreement. Resolved that the Board of Education approves an independent contracted services agreement with Lee Lu for the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two school year at a rate of a hundred and fifty dollars per hour, not to exceed sixty hours for business administration services. Do we have a motion? Teres, second. Laura, any discussion?
I just, a quick question. So we, so she's left, but we're going to have her do, what, what kind of work would she be doing?
So we're having her available to consult. She's been here for a number of years and she can, as needed, for a limited amount of hours to be able to consult with us as we do the transition to a new wonderful business manager.
I see. Okay.
Okay. All in favor? Okay. Prove an independent contracted services agreement. Resolved that the Board of Education approves an independent contracted services agreement with Laurie Bauer for the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two school year at a rate of four thousand dollars per day, not to exceed ten days for special education administration services. Have a motion? Cynthia, second. Teres, any discussion? All in favor? Prove an owner-architect agreement. Whereas following a request for proposals for architecture services for capital projects, Tuckahoe Union Free School District entered into a standard form of agreement between owner and architect, uh, dated March thirty-first, two thousand sixteen with KGND for the architectural services. And whereas for the capital projects authorized by the proposal, proposition approved by the district voters at the annual meeting of May eighteenth, two thousand twenty-one, the district received a proposal from KGND Architects dated June second, two thousand twenty-one. In which it has proposed to provide its architectural services for these new capital and projects for stipulated sums calculating, calculated using the same percentages of construction cost as it proposed in its two thousand sixteen response to the district's request for proposal. And now therefore be it, be it resolved that the Board of Education, Tuckahoe Union Free School District approves and authorizes the standard form of agreement between owner and architect. Is it okay if I say KGND? Robin, is that right? Okay, good. Um, dated for July first, two thousand twenty-one for architectural services for the additions and alterations to William E. Kyle School and alterations to the Tuckahoe Middle School and High School. And be it further resolved, the Board of Education, the Tuckahoe Union Free School District authorizes and empowers the president of the Board of Education to execute the standard form of agreement between the owner and architects with KGND Architects. And be it further resolved, the Board of Education, the Tuckahoe Union Free School District authorizes and directs the superintendent of schools and business manager to take all actions necessary to implement the purpose of this resolution and to implement the agreement with KGND at, dated July first, two thousand twenty-one. Do we have a motion? Cynthia, second. Laurie, any discussion? This is obviously to keep moving forward on our capital improvement project, the new one. All in favor? All right. I think we're going to have some discuss, is it okay if I skip and do twenty and twenty-one, go back to nineteen, so that's where we can kind of finish up with the discussion? Okay. So I'm going to skip over nineteen and go back to, we have just two other ones after that that we can get knocked out. So that's approve photographer is item number twenty. Resolved that the Board of Education, the Tuckahoe Union Free School District hereby approves the agreement by and between the district and Ryus. Am I saying that right?
Yes.
Ryus. Photography for photography services for seniors, for a senior sports slideshow and graduation ceremony for the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one school year at a cost not to exceed one thousand dollars. Do I have a motion? Teres, second. Laura, all in favor?
I'm sorry.
Approve pupil personnel agreement. Resolved to approve a consultant agreement with all points licensed behavior analysts, P L L C, for classroom consultation services for the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two school year at a rate of one thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars per day for a total of fourteen half-days, not to exceed twelve thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. Do we have a motion? All right, second. Laura, any discussion? All in favor? Okay. And I'm going to flip back to our last item, which is item number nineteen. Which is to approve a resolution. I'm getting thirsty. Okay. Whereas Governor Andrew Cuomo lifted the state emergency related to the COVID-nineteen pandemic on June twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-one. And whereas the action lifting the state of emergency resulted in a rescission of the executive orders mandating face coverings in indoor settings for vaccinated individuals across the state. And whereas pre-kindergarten through twelfth-grade school settings are still required to continue the mask mandate as the New York State Department of Health and New York State Education Department have not lifted regulations and guidance requiring all individuals to wear masks or face coverings in school facilities. And whereas according to the CDC, the vaccination rate for those fully vaccinated and who are eligible for the vaccine is sixty-eight percent. And whereas according to New York State Communities in the Tuckahoe School District who are eligible and have received at least one dose of the vaccine is Tuckahoe, sixty-four point four percent, Eastchester, sixty-seven point seven percent, Bronxville, sixty-nine point eight percent. Whereas the infection rate for COVID-nineteen in the Westchester County as of, as of June twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-one is point four one percent. And whereas it is recognized that local boards of education are vested with the authority to make policy decisions on behalf of the students, staff and residents of their district as local school boards have particular knowledge and understanding of the communities they serve. However, they must do so within regulatory framework of the law and with the guidance from local, state and federal officials. And whereas local boards of education have been limited in their ability to make policy decisions related to mask mandate requirements as the, as New York State regulations and orders have required to continue use of mask and face coverings in school facilities. Despite the fact that there is guidance from local, state and federal officials that indicate, given the infection rate and vaccination rate in Westchester County, such mask requirements are no longer required in other settings. Now therefore be it, I'm sorry, now therefore the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District urges the New York State Department of Health to immediately lift the mask requirements for pre-kindergarten through twelfth-grade school facilities in Westchester County. Given the current scientific information related to vaccine efficiency, efficacy, uh, increase in vaccinations, current infection rates and guidance from local, state and federal authorities. Be it resolved, the Board of Education, the Tuckahoe Union Free School District firmly approves the administration's previous decisions to lift the mask mandate for any outdoor school programs or activities. So that's the resolution. I'm actually not going to call for a motion, um, just yet because I know we're going to have some discussion about this and I know there's some varying, um, opinions on the board about this. So I think it's healthy to have the discussion first. One of the outcomes, you know, obviously at some point we, we will likely, um, motion for it and vote. Uh, so it either could be voted in or could be, or could be voted down. Um, but another possible outcome is as a result of our discussion, there could also be a, a motion to table as well or to revise or change. So because of that, I don't want to motion for it yet. So I'll kick it over to the superintendent first, just to maybe give a little bit of a rationale as to why she put this on the agenda and what she's looking to accomplish with this.
Okay, so this resolution is to request from the Board of Education that as a board and superintendent, we advocate to New York State to lift requirements and mandates requiring individuals to wear masks in our, inside our schools due to the emergence of new data. The resolution I put forth to the board is to consider is advocating to the state to follow the numbers now, and they are low and vaccines are relatively high in New York and Westchester. Recommending to unmask our students in school while respecting the choice of any faculty, family, student to wear a mask. I am asking that we are ultimately driven by science and data, both of which point to the low, low numbers. The percent positive rate, transmission rates, hospitalization rates, ICU rates, vaccination rates should all be factors in deciding if students should wear a mask in school. Overall, the risk to children is just too low to justify the remaining restrictions they face. to children is just too low to justify the remaining restrictions they face. A low percentage, .4 of COVID tests were positive. In Westchester County, New York, there are 627,884 people, 64.9 have received at least one dose, and 576,225 people, so 59.5 are fully vaccinated. I got this from, I called the county today. There are 1.5 daily new cases and a .93 infection rate and .4 positivity rate. I know that there are different rates out there, so I don't think that that's something that we can go over and over, because the CDC says one thing, the New York State Department, every day you look and there's something different. Somewhere between .1 and 1.9% of COVID-19 infections in children result in hospitalizations, and that could be an overestimate, given the recent studies suggesting a prospect that some of this was miscalculated. What I'm trying to say is a one-size-fits-all approach to health policy does not make sense at this point. We appreciate that at the beginning, there was an abundance of caution, we kept on hearing that word, and the state has required, but at some point, and we did a great job, we need to look at the numbers of COVID cases and make decisions for the betterment of our students, and continue to look at the demographics. And again, like, I just remember last time, it was all about, you know, when we went through this year, hospitalizations and ICUs. And I spoke to the county today, and the hospitalizations are very, very, very low. In June, I think, like, the middle of June, there was 10, and now there's four. There's one person in the ICU, and there thankfully have been no deaths in Westchester in the last few days. And again, we keep on hearing kids are extremely low risk from COVID, and they aren't vectors for transmission like we thought they were, and the state allows everybody else to return to normalcy. And, you know, I am encouraged, and we see that, again, we're dining out, we're exercising at gyms without masks. We know our students are having sleepovers and parties. I've seen videos of kids after the great graduation for the middle school students, I saw them all dancing together without masks. These activities are all enhanced now that people are no longer behind the mask. However, in our school buildings, the restrictions on our students and faculty remain in place. And again, students, our students did great, and I've said that all along, but we all know some of the things that were said tonight. We brought in foundations, and to really master phonics, we need our students to, we need to see how they're making these sounds. They need to see how their teachers are making these sounds. Our young students that we prioritized from the start, we need to remember that we prioritize them, and that social connections are very important to them. And even for our older students, we can't see underneath their masks, their expressions that we had before, that they may be confused, they may be sad, they may be depressed. And teachers and staff and counselors could detect that and look to respond immediately. Removing masks meets the needs of our students, so both academically and socially emotionally. As the leader of our district, again, I am so thankful to our administrators, our faculty and staff, and especially our school board, who worked tirelessly to provide as much uninterrupted instruction in person as we could. We were one of the first school districts close in Westchester, and we know how important it is to be nimble and responsive. We have appreciated the ways in which the state responded to the changes in data and research, and so did we. And we continue to talk to the state, we continue to follow the mandates, but push them to what worked for our school district. We did not overrespond, we didn't consistently close down schools, we really did our, our contact tracing very, very carefully, so our students had a lot of schools. And I just want to continue to make sure that we advocate. And some people may say, why now? You know, it's July. Why are you doing this now? Why don't you see what, what happens in August? But I happen to know that they're talking about it now, and that our, our leaders in our, in our state and in our county really care about what special interests think. And we sent a letter for masks to be dropped outside, we did that, and so did other people, and just five days later, they did that. So I understand the risk is not zero. I don't know if it will ever be with this virus. However, the educational and mental health gains of our children being unmasked when learning indoors, I believe outweighs the risk at this point. These benefits and numbers should bolster the state's response to our request. So I am requesting advocacy to return to the highest point of normalcy for our stu, our students. I am, you know, again, this is my recommendation. I know it's up to the board, and I think the board should be open to hearing from everybody and see where it goes. Again, the nimbleness of what we did, again, it can change, and the state can change too. We have so many different ways that we can handle this virus now, and I'm just asking that we advocate for just another way with the mask mandate.
And just to be clear, that's the purpose of this, of this resolution, because if this doesn't, if this resolution passes, nothing changes, because we don't have the authority to change it, but it just basically gives you the authority from the board to then advocate for, for a change in that policy and, but ultimately, it's up to the department, up to the state, whether or not that changes or not.
Right, and we'll follow the state. We have, so we will do that.
All right, so let's, let's open it up to some discussion. I think what we'll do is, we'll do one around, we'll go around once, I think, like, sort of in order, so that everybody gets a chance to sort of just speak or say whatever they want to say about this. And then, once everybody's gone through, we'll just kind of reform it from that point on. Just, you know, just be respectful of one another, don't talk over people. If somebody's talking, let them finish, but if you're talking, don't hog the microphone, either. You just be, be, be succinct if you can. So Cynthia, we'll start with you. Go ahead.
I could be quick. I mean, I think from the very start of it, I mean, I know most of you probably know where I stand. I mean, I do stand for advocating for it. I believe that everybody should have the choice, whether you want to, you know, vaccinate, not vaccinate. I mean, I'm vaccinated, my kids are, but I'm not gonna impose that on anyone else. But people should have the choice to either vaccinate or unmask, and that is part of the reason my kids did not go to school. I did not want them masked. So for me, it is, should be left up to, you know, parents and students to make that decision at this point. So I, I'm behind that, to advocate for it.
Okay. Teraz?
So I, I would agree with that, and I think that you, we do have a choice. You can mask or not mask and vaccinate or not vaccinate, but a couple of things. Number one, masks do work. That's scientifically proven. The reason why, I work at Yale New Haven Health, we have a multi-hospital system that has, I think we're up to somewhere close to, I don't know, we'll say 3,000 beds system-wide. We did not have one case of hospitalized flu this year, because whether it, not to say there wasn't flu circulating, but there was flu circulating, but people weren't getting as sick, they were not hospitalized. That's one part of it. Number two is, the current guideline is that if you're vaccinated, you don't have to mask. If you're asymptomatic, you probably don't spread virus, but there are, we're talking about, my major issue with this particular resolution is quoting vaccination rates when you're talking about a population that over half are not eligible to be vaccinated, and that should be a parent choice. I don't think that, you know, we're at a point right now where anybody's gonna mandate the vaccine, and I'm all for it being a parent choice. I'll make mine as a parent, everybody makes theirs. But then to say that you're going to say, we'll just unmask everybody, when I don't want to vaccinate either, is not fair for the general public period. And the one thing that I think we're ignoring by talking about this now is the fact that there are variants. There are coronaviruses that circulate every single year. There's about five or six of them. The reason why they survive is they mutate, right? And so we know, if we look at England, that the Delta virus has now, I think it's close to 100%, it's doubling every two weeks. And a few weeks ago, 250,000 children were not in school, schools were shut again because there were so many positive cases. And so whether you believe in masks, not believe in masks, I think here, what my purpose is, is to serve all the children, that they have free equitable education. And I believe that in-person education will never be replaced, whether it's a hybrid, remote. I think when you're in school, being with your peers, in front of a teacher, is something that's priceless. And I feel like right now, we're really putting ourselves way ahead when we don't have the data to support this. Right now, the vaccination rate in children 12 and over is 51%. That's what it is. And from 5 to 12, which is more than half of our population, they're, they can't even be vaccinated. So we're then making a decision for everybody, which I don't think is fair to do. As far as the eighth grade party, when, I have an eighth grader, I was there, I'm unmasked, I'm vaccinated. I'm sure not everybody unmasked was vaccinated. My son is. I don't care, like, you know what I mean? I think at some point, it's everybody's choice to make. You're either concerned about the virus, you're concerned about the long-term effects, and that's your decision as a parent, and I completely support it. I can also tell you that I do work within a children's hospital. If you spoke to our cardiologists, our infectious disease and our neurologists, the post-COVID multi-inflammatory myoparyoiditis and myocarditis is increasing. And now if you speak to infectious disease specialists, because we are seeing such an increase, they're not even sure that it's only a four-week period. It may be six weeks post-COVID. And when, I don't know if people actually know what that is. It's an inflammation of the heart. It will not, in all likelihood, kill you. You'll be out of sports for six months, you're hospitalized, you're on medication, like, it's not without risk. So that's my stance on it. I don't have a, I mean, I would also just question why the Health and Wellness Committee wasn't put together. Like, this is how we've been successful, and it seems that we're making this move without doing what we've done to this point, to be as successful as we are. Because I, I'm not an expert. I'm not a virologist, I'm not an epidemiologist. I do ask a lot of questions, and I do have access to people who know a lot. And again, I think that for sure, quoting these vaccination rates to support your argument is, in my opinion, it does not make sense. And I would also say, just, this is my final comment, kids do spread it to each other, they just don't get as sick. Like, there've been parties where, you know, sleepovers where eight, 10 kids either tested positive, had antibodies, and so we know that it does spread among children. And that's within our own community. I mean, it's everywhere. And the pediatricians did, they suffered, they were, they were starving this whole winter, because nobody was sick. There was no strep. They were dying for head lice.
Laura?
I'm done.
Are you done?
For now.
Okay, so I'll just start with, like, thanking everybody and Dr. Goodman and Pete for having this conversation. I do think it's, it's a good time, even though I'll disagree with my colleague on, you know, why now. I think it's important to talk about, and I think there's a lot of anxiety out there with parents, with what to do and planning. I'm sure parents will plan around what, you know, what the district decides and what the state decides, which is ultimately what we're gonna have to decide to go by. But I'm just, I had some, I had some comments that I, that I thought about saying, and one, and a lot of them really was numbers, because I am data-driven, and I think that as a board, we're, I'm not, you know, I'm not, I don't work in a hospital, but, you know, I think data's important, and I think understanding what our current data is around here is important. And there has been, you know, out of this, I think it's 975,321 population in Westchester, we've had 628, like, to your point, to these numbers, and if you add them together with the, with also the positivity rate, it goes over 80%. So either natural immunity or vaccines, okay, combination, and some people have had both. So I'm just gonna go down, just to go along your line of thought, Teraz. So cloth versus, so in, you're saying that masks work. So in your institution, which is Yale, do you wear cloth or do you wear N95?
I wear a Level 1.
Okay, so do children that come to our district wear a cloth or off-the-shelf CVS mask, or are they wearing something in the hospital where there was no flu masks? Does your hospital allow cloth masks?
Yes. You have to wear a, a Level 1 surgical on top of it.
Is that what children are wearing coming to the district?
Yes. No, I don't know. I have no idea what they're wearing.
Okay, so I'm, my point is that.
No, I'm sure they're wearing cloth masks, but it doesn't matter, because it doesn't matter.
So I'm not, I'm not, I'm not gonna deliberate, and I'm not deliberating on masks, whether they work or don't work, you know, because you can find an article if they work, and you can find an article if they don't work. I can just say that, you know, if, if, if your first premise was that there was no flu. Well, maybe they weren't testing for it, there was no flu, but there is going to be flu. So then if you go down your, your thought process, then we should always wear masks, right? So I mean, flu is worse for kids, if you look at the numbers. They, they more die to the flu than COVID. So then therefore, respiratory, any respiratory droplets or risk should be wearing masks. So I'm just gonna leave it there. Obviously, COVID and flu are two different things, but I think that's a little, a little misleading, okay? Variants are out there, and we know that there are variants. Viruses mutate by nature, and they mutate, as you said, every, you know, there's like 27 variants that I read that are out there. Now, the Delta one has been more contagious, but there's no increase in hospitalization, there's no increase in deaths with it. And it's a scare tactic, and if we want to keep talking about variants, we're never gonna get out of this, and we're never gonna give our kids a normal opportunity to go back to normal. And I, that's what I would say about variants. And you know what? The science isn't into your point, I agree with you. We don't know. I don't know. The state doesn't know, they're gonna let us know.
If you look at England, though, they're upticking with their hospitalization.
Yes, they're, and by the way, the vaccine people are, they're getting breakthroughs through the vaccines too. So if your answer is that, well, we can't go, and we don't know, and the kids aren't vaccinated, only 50% of them are vaccinated, well, guess what? People that are vaccinated are getting this Delta variant. They're not dying, they're not as sick.
No, exactly.
Okay, so I'm just saying, let's talk about the positives.
Everybody in the hospital right now is unvaccinated.
What's that?
Every single hospitalized person in my institution right now is unvaccinated. I don't really care.
Okay, here's the thing. Okay, so you're, you're saying that 50% of, are they not vaccinated? Is that what you're saying, they're not vaccinated at all?
No, of the, our current hospitalization numbers, which are very low, they're in the teens, everybody who is hospitalized is unvaccinated as of today.
And are they, and they're in the ICU?
Either ICU or step down.
Okay, so then my next comment would be, I appreciate feedback from someone who works in a hospital. We're not in Connecticut. We're in Takahoe. And I think that as a data person, I want to know what's happening here in Westchester, Takahoe, Bronxville. And there's one person in the ICU, and there were seven positive cases, and at some point, that flattened the curve to zero risk, which you said back when we were trying to get everybody back in, this isn't CNN, this isn't news, this isn't hysteria, put your mask on and come back in. And you said N95 at the time too, and you were right. But now you're saying, continue the, continue.
I didn't say N95, I said masks.
Well, you had an N95 in your hand when you said that, so I assume that's what you meant.
When the teachers were, like, concerned about their safety.
Because the truth is, N95 masks are the thing that you should be wearing. If you really want to advocate masks, put an N95 on, have it fitted correctly, have it tested, because cloth masks, it goes right through its aerosol, it goes around, it goes above it. And I'm just saying, I'm not gonna go back to, so that, I'm almost done. Okay, so 51%, you're, so then, then I'm just gonna, the last thing I would say is, if we're gonna constantly have Health and Wellness Committee that I was on and that you were on discuss this. And we didn't, no one elected the Health and Wellness Committee to make decisions. You know, they elected us, and so I will speak on behalf of the Health, Health and Wellness Committee, or a conversation at least that happened, which was, we were concerned about doing this earlier because K through whatever are not vaccinated yet, right? That was the conversation, that was the concern. They're not vaccinated. And that's what you just said. And my response to that is, you're never gonna get everybody from that, in that, because some parents aren't gonna vaccinate. So I, you, the Health and Wellness Committee would conclude, don't do this because we're not vaccinated. That's what I'm, that was the conclusion the last time. So it would be, why would it be a different conclusion now?
Because they're not vaccine-eligible. You're not giving people the choice.
But why if we met, would the conclusion be different now than it was when we met a couple of weeks ago?
Maybe it wouldn't.
So and that's why you want the Health and Wellness Committee, because the conclusion is the same. If you're not vaccinated, it's if then. If not vaccinated, then we leave masks on. Is that right? Is that what you're saying?
No, I think also, the, I don't, I don't know the variant. First of all, there are variants of every coronavirus every single year, and that's why you catch a head cold every year, right?
Of course, of course.
This cold is different virus. If you're losing your sense of taste and smell, it's somehow affecting your brain, right? That's also known. We also don't know with this Delta virus, how it's gonna spread, and we don't know if the natural, we don't know. Like, that's my whole point, is we don't know. We don't know if the natural immunity, how long it lasts, is it as effective against variants as vaccines are?
Well, that's my.
And we're here, like, for me, this is not personal. I'm gonna do what I'm gonna do for my kids. For me, I'm sitting here as a Board of Ed member, representing our school community. And we have people here who are representing their opinions, and there are other people that wrote us letters, representing different opinions, and people who we all have, you know, conversations with on the side, that don't feel the way people are, you know, right here in this room with us tonight, right? So I think that we can't just say, we're gonna listen to this group, and we're not gonna listen to that group.
We're using data, Teraz, we're using data. That's what, that's what the doctor gonna be presenting. We're not talking about your feelings, her feelings, their thoughts, there's a, her letter. We're talking about data. There's one, there's one person in the ICU, there's seven people out of almost a mil, you know, a million people.
But there was nobody in the, like, last year, our numbers were low too.
So you're gonna, so is this gonna keep, so when does it end?
I don't know.
When do we go back to normal?
I don't know.
When do we go back to normal?
I don't know.
Is it zero?
There's no such thing as zero risk.
No, I don't know. When do we go back? We don't. In your theory, we don't.
I'm just saying that we should allow people to all make a decision, that's it.
I think the back and forth is good, I want to get there. But I did want to kind of go once around the horn before we sort of had the back and forth, so if I could just stop you there.
I'm sorry, I apologize.
Give Lori a chance to speak. And then we'll, and it's okay to have the back and forth, but I just kind of want to give everybody one, one time around before we do that. So go ahead, Lori.
So thank you, Teraz, for saying what the purpose of us being up here is, is to represent our school community at, at, at. represent our school community at large, because I find it unfortunate that we didn't have some of those other people here to represent maybe a different opinion, but it is what it is, and so I have been vaccinated, I have had my children vaccinated, I was one of these people who was totally against the vaccine earlier this year, until I had the unfortunate experience of talking to a family member of mine who was suffering from the coronavirus, it was horrific, and so, and when I've gone around and talked to people who are still suffering from the effects of the coronavirus, no taste, sense of smell, one woman I talked to couldn't even, she still can't after four or five months later, even smell when her infant has, you know, gone to the bathroom, so, which is a big deal, may not be that big of a deal that people sit in a room, but to me, that's a big deal. I also want to be careful that we don't generalize to make it seem like, oh, well, this number is so low, and, you know, this low group over here is, you know, suffering, but look at all these numbers that aren't, for every family who has a member of their family who has suffered, died, who are continuing to suffer, it is a big deal, and so for those people, I'm sitting in here in this space for them as well, I am for any parent making a decision to do what they would so choose to do, and particularly for those groups in terms of the mask situation, because the vaccine is available, and from what I've understood and, and reading, it is soon to be up for FDA approval, so it would be interesting to see what the talk is at that point, but it is in the process of going through that approval process. I, for those children who are vaccine-eligible, I feel that they should, parents have a right to do that, and so, to have a mask, so maybe those, if, if it could be done, maybe those are, that age group, maybe they don't wear a mask, I mean, part of the reason why I'm getting vaccinated, aside from seeing the suffering, my husband pastors a church, we had many deaths, and not just among black people, because I know that people wanna say, oh, it's black and Hispanics, no, it's everybody suffers, so we wanna make that clear, but to see families suffering was not good, so for those families for, of children who represent the group who are vaccine-eligible, perhaps we could split it up where, you know, the middle school doesn't wear, I feel like the blood's on your hands, if you don't wanna, you know, vaccinate, you don't wanna wear, your kid to wear a mask, okay, so be it, I don't want one child suffering from this, I don't, and I don't want one parent having to deal with a child who's been sick, but years ago, my son H1N1 was big, that was the coronavirus at the time, my, my two children were actually very sick from that, Jayden was sick for, like, a month, sick, 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 so, you know, when you, when I think about young children, our youngest cherubs, that K to 5 group, who are ineligible at this point, even though I know there are trials going around now, hopefully soon they will be eligible, but for now, they are not, and for those children, I think it would be unfair for us to say, no, we don't have, no, they don't need to wear a mask, like, then, you know, just go on. The other point that I wanna make is that perhaps the numbers were low because we were doing those things to mitigate the spread of the virus, like, we were all masked, we were socially distanced, there were a lot of factors that went into keeping those numbers low, because we were doing what we were supposed to be doing, you know, as far as the experts say, so perhaps that's the reason why the numbers are low, were low, the other thing was, we don't know what's gonna happen in the fall, I thought that part of the whole coronavirus thing was that it's lower in the summer, it's when we get into the fall months and the winter that we might see an uptick, so that is concerning, because we go back to schools beginning soon, the fall is soon to follow, so, so those are some of the reasons that I would not support this resolution, because I think it is unfair for our K to 5 population who's not vaccine-eligible, I just saw a news report just within the last couple of days, that a camp somewhere, I don't know where it was, in the south or wherever it was, all of the kids got sick, they were all sick, the teachers, everybody, and it was among mostly those people who were not vaccinated, the other thing is that you can still get it even if you are, maybe not to the extent of other people, and to your point, Dr. Goodman, about K to 5, and you can't see phonemic aware, you know, hear them and see them talking, I have not taught in that, in an environment where we had to wear masks, but I taught for many, many, many years as a K to 5 teacher and literacy specialist, I've also taught foundations, which train of foundations, not a new phenomenon, it was back way, way back then, foundations has been around for quite some time, we're just getting on with it, but it's been here for a long time, and I just feel like there are ways, just like we mitigated things during this, the peak of this virus situation, I think that we could mitigate things until those young children are vaccine-eligible, and their parents have a chance to get them vaccinated if they want to, and I think that there are ways that we can do it, our teachers have been vaccinated for the most part, and so perhaps they could call them over in small groups, they should be working in small groups anyway, maybe they, the teacher would work with them individually, maybe they could get a see-through mask, I think that if we put our heads together, there would be some ways that we could mitigate it. The other thing, what would have been nice, that I think we should have done, is to have had our school physician, we, from what I understand, we have health and wellness people on that committee who are physicians, who are working with, with Peds and et cetera, it's unfortunate that they weren't here to give us maybe, hopefully, some real data that they're actually looking at, that they're privy to on a daily, that would have been nice to have, and I, at this point, I would say table this until we have, have opportunity, have more discussion and more experts on the topic, and, and if we are going to move forward in the fall, that we think about, maybe it's right now, it would be for those kids who are not vaccine-eligible, and give them their parents, those who want to, an opportunity to, to get them vaccinated or not.
All right, thank you, Lori. All right, so I'll take a crack at it, I did wanna ask you about, did you wanna say anything about Dr. Calgaris?
I did, I did write down what Dr. Calgaris said to me.
So why don't you go ahead and say that?
Unfortunately, she could not be here tonight, she's on vacation, but she told me that she was in support of the resolution, she said that the rates are very low in our country, and that will prevent the variants for the most part, breakthrough cases have been very mild, the kids are together throughout the summer, and if things change by the time school opens, we will mask up if we need to, and that's what I was kinda talking about with us being nimble, we were just asking the state to follow the data with the high vaccination rate and the low COVID infection rate, she can't make the meeting, but I can speak to what she said, that's what she said to me yesterday when I called, I think it was yesterday, I tried to look at my date, maybe it was Friday night, but she said that, and I, you know, she wasn't saying absolute, which I'm not saying either, I think that data is important, you know, I'm not anti-mask, and I'm not anti-vaccine, in all actuality, I'm not, but I do think that people should have the choice at this point with the rate being low, and again, what she said, what I'm saying is, let's be nimble, let's be flexible, and let's look at data.
Can I just add just one data point to that, just to piggyback on that, another pediatrician that was on the Health and, Health and Wellness Committee, I asked him for some data, he said his last COVID case was the end of April, that he has seen in his office, and it's a high-volume pediatric office in Westchester, so, just to add to the, another person from the committee.
Well, so I'm, I'm in favor of this resolution, and the reason why I feel that way, and I'm not gonna get into how effective masks are or not, or whether or not people should vaccinate or not vaccinate, the way I took the look at this, the way I come at it is, you know, I'm very conservative-minded when it comes to the role of government, and the role of, of man, anything being mandated and regulated, I think it's fine and appropriate when there is an emergency situation where the actions of some adversely affect the actions of others, but when you get to a certain point where it's not quite an emergency anymore, I don't think it's appropriate for any state or government or entity to mandate anything on you, and again, obviously, we're still in a global pandemic, I get it, but locally, the emergency situation that we were in is really no longer here, at least not right now, with these numbers being what they are, with the rates being as low as they are, the hospitalizations being as low as they are, I think it's time to shift back the decision-making to the parent, decision, decision-making to the individual, and I think, you know, if, if it was to change back, if we were to get a spike, we now know what to do, we can easily fall back into, we can implement a mask mandate, literally overnight, I mean, overnight, we could just do it, so, I don't see why we need to start out that way, I think we should start out with where we're at, and then see where it goes. Couple things that were said that I wanted to address, you know, with regard to, you know, Lori made a point about, you know, maybe we're here where we are right now because of all the efforts that have been done, well, they're not being done anymore anywhere else, it's just the kids right now, I mean, I was at the Yankee game on Saturday afternoon, Sunday afternoon, and Fourth of July, there's 40,000 adults there, and I'm okay with it, I was happy to see it, but 40,000 adults sitting next to each other, not masked, nobody's checking at the door for vaccinations, so we're gonna say that's okay, but we're gonna tell our kids in a learning environment that they have to wear a mask, so I think it's, so if you're gonna have a philosophy that what we did worked, and you wanna keep that going, then you gotta keep it going across the board, you just can't cherry pick one little group for six hours of a day and say you need to do this, and then everybody else is gonna do what they want.
But you're comparing that to an outdoor event where they're sitting in a closed classroom situation.
No, you're right, no, it's, it's a rude comparison, what I'm saying, though, is that you're, you're citing what worked, what worked was a layered, broad approach, and now all that has pretty much gone away, and now we're just leaving this one little piece, so I don't know if that would...
Could it be that people are, there are people who are vaccinating more and more children, you know, families are choosing to vaccinate over not, so could that be it? I mean, I don't know.
Yeah, well, and I would say also, in terms of like, where we are, it's the summer, true, and numbers are reduced in the summer due to the temperature, as it was last year, what I think is very different about this year, is that we now have 68% of the population vaccinated, we had nobody vaccinated last year.
Is it 68% of where?
68% of...
Are you talking about the state, are you talking about Tuckahoe?
No, eligible.
It's actually not eligible, it's the population.
I spoke to the Department of Health, so when I gave the numbers just before, she did the math with me.
Honestly, I don't know if it really matters, 68, the bottom line is that we have a significant portion of our population vaccinated, plus those, like Laura said, who also have immunity from having it, last year at this time, 11 million people in the country had gotten, there was no vaccine, and 11 million people in the country had gotten Corona, which means 3%, so 3% of the country at best was, had antibodies, now we have over, well over 50%, closer to 70%, plus natural immunity, so we're in a much different place than we were last year, much different.
Yeah, Pete, you mentioned about the antibody, like, I often said, I said, I don't understand why they're not checking, because I can almost guarantee you, if they checked antibodies for all these kids, so many of the kids already had it, that was my daughter's situation, didn't know she had it, went for the antibodies, she wound up, I didn't know she had it, we all had it in our house, we knew, we were sick, she wasn't, so I'm, I'm not sure why that's not part of it, like, why aren't we seeing that, because then some parents might feel more comfortable, oh, my child had it, they have some natural immunity, and that may...
Now, as far, as far as the K through 5 kids, true, they don't have the option of being vaccinated, but like, like Therese said earlier, I mean, there's virtually very little complications when they, when they do get it, I mean, there's, they're not hospitalized, they do very, very, very well.
No, they're not hospitalized, but they don't know the lung, we, like, listen, I'm, it's a risk.
Yeah.
You get in your car, that's a risk, you go swimming, it's a risk, everything in life is a risk, right? I'm not risk-averse, but I also think that, again, I'm not here, I'm sitting here as a board trustee representing people who elected us into this position, and our goal is to provide education, my opinion is that education is best provided in person, period, I fought for that since last summer, right? I sat in your office with you, right, so my, my concern is that we're, we don't know, and we do know, and this is a global pandemic, we have followed Europe, and if we look towards England, Israel, India, like, so then if our schools are then shut for two, four, six weeks in the fall, I, I can't, I don't feel comfortable sitting here as a board trustee taking that risk on behalf of the school popul, like, I just don't feel comfortable doing that.
But what you're actually saying, though, is that you think it's still appropriate to take that decision away from parents.
I think it's appropriate right now, because, like you just said, I'm, I'm, I'm a conserv, I, I agree with you, we've talked about this, like, we share similar political views, I agree, but I think that right now, to say that this is not a global situation, it is a global situation, like, this is still a public health crisis, you know, we here are not, we're not seeing it.
Right.
To the same degree, and to your point, I have friends that work in epidemiology in Presbyterian, their numbers are almost mirroring ours, more so because they're a larger institution, they have more beds, but in our area, everything is very similar. One of my friends works in the infectious disease office there, and I called her to ask her, like, what their numbers were, it's similar, I mean, and again, statistically not significant, but if you look at trends, if you look at statistics, and we're making a decision about education, you know, for the fall, or something to promote, and I can't, to me, it doesn't make sense logically to say that we have these vaccination numbers when we're talking about a population that's more than 50%, not even vaccine-eligible, that's my point.
Why do you say 50%, though?
Yeah, they're not gonna check them.
Because children, K, K, zero through 12 is not 50% of the population.
No, of our school population, we're writing, this saying...
Of our school population.
Okay, so this is saying, like, unmask our school population, we have 1,100 kids in our school, about half of them are 12 to 18, so that means the other half are not vaccine-eligible, that's what I'm saying, in our, in Westchester County...
But that half, though, I don't mean to cut you off, that half is the least vulnerable, least susceptible to this of the entire population, right? I mean, the...
I don't know, I mean, listen, you may be, I only know the people I talk to, Pete, which take care, like, all I know is what I can tell you what I just said, we're seeing more and more kids come in, boys more than girls, with post-COVID issues, you know what I mean?
What age, though?
What?
What age?
Mainly teens, mainly teens, but we don't know.
But the teens are eligible for the vaccine.
They are.
So at some point, who are we protecting?
Okay, so then, are you comfortable, and you're gonna sit there, because you're gonna be the board president again, and when schools are closed, and we're back on lockdown in the fall, because the Delta variant, which is now whatever, is now at whatever percent by then, because it's doubling every two weeks, just like what happened in England, right, you'll be comfortable with that, and you'll feel good about the decision you made on behalf of the kids who are getting educated, that school is now shut for yet another month.
And you think mask mandates would stop that?
I don't know.
Exactly, so I don't know how I feel about that, because I'm not so sure that would be the reason, but, but...
But how do you know it isn't? But how do you know?
I don't know that it's not, but what I do know is that we, I understand that data on, at state level, county level, lags, so you don't wanna be playing catch-up, I get that, in terms of like, getting ahead of a problem, if things start spiraling back the other way, but as far as we're concerned, we're just concerned about our district, right? Our district's very small, we have a very good beat on what's happening, I think if things started upticking in our district, in terms of clusters of, in fact, we would see that very quickly, and if we see that very quickly, we can immediately react, if we have the ability to do it, if the state allows us to, and we, and like I said, a superintendent could send an email and put mask mandates in social distancing back in place overnight, so I don't, I don't see why we have to, like, try and prevent something in six months down the road, if we see it happening, we could, we could, we could adjust, but right now, I don't see us in our area...
I don't see how we're not weighing the fact of all that was lost academically for these kids in a year, and you're willing to play roulette with that.
So you're, what's the roulette?
What's the roulette?
The roulette is to make these decisions now when you don't have the data, when you see...
But you don't either.
I know that this is a global pandemic, and that's...
Okay, global pandemic, but here's what you're leaving out, but here's what you're leaving out in England.
And even with 250,000 kids at home, so if we're okay with that...
So for somebody who told, somebody who told people, stop, stop with the CNN talking points, and just go with what we know in our neighborhood, and here's what I'd say to you, the Delta is more contagious, it is more, but the other, the other part that you're leaving out is that this vaccine is still 93%, or natural immunity, 93% effective, they're not getting a...
It's not their natural immunity, you don't know.
Yes, it is, you don't know either.
No, but so, you don't know either, neither of us know.
But you're making decisions for parents when you don't know either, and you're using scare tactics to say...
No, I'm letting, no, I'm letting parents make a decision.
Let them make a decision, then.
We're making a decision right now, because, let's be real, people who don't want a mask, they don't want to get the COVID vaccine, that's a fact. People who don't want to quarantine, don't go and get tested.
But people getting the Delta variant that have the vaccine, or don't have it.
Yes, but they're not, yes, okay, but not nearly at the same rate.
But your answer, then, is to vaccinate, there has to be vaccination.
I don't care, I don't care if you vaccinate or don't vaccinate. What I care about, sitting here as a board trustee, is representing the entire population.
So we're, continue to wear a mask until-
What I'm saying, when people are eligible, if you want to unmask 12 to 18-
Well, you're saying eligible, so you're saying that what does the number have to be then? Because we're at point four right now, what does the number have to be, zero?
Then take out the vaccination part, say that the infection rate is point four.
So you don't believe there's natural immunity, you don't think we're near herd immunity here?
I, I don't think that's really even a discussion that we're trying to do. I, I think that what we're, what we are trying to be, what I hope that we're always, what I hope that we're always trying to be is proactive and not reactive. So the fact that we, we would, we took the precautions all, this whole year, a year and a half, we did what we were supposed to do, and our numbers were low. What we saw was, Amy, you can correct me if I'm wrong, is that those children, this is prior to the vaccine or whatever, when, when they left out of their community, right, right here, you know, because sometimes we operate in silos, and we don't really understand that some people actually get out and move around and go to other places, then they're, then we'd have to do the contact tracing, kids would then, you know, be on remote learning and all of that. My thing is that we need to be proactive, at least for that K to five population who is not vaccine eligible. My, my, and it could be, it could be, but, but Cynthia- And it could be, it could be a parent choice after it becomes vac-, after that group becomes vaccine eligible. I feel like this, we're sitting here, one thing I'm not going to ever be intimidated, I'm, I'm good for, I'm black, I fight every day, okay? So the fact, the fact that, the fact that, um, the fact that I'm trying to make is that we have some of our babies who are not vaccine eligible. And I want to make sure that I am doing what I'm supposed to do by them until they are and their parents have a choice to go one way or the other.
They have a choice, they'll have a choice.
So who's going to enforce the mask?
Pardon, I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said.
No, and Pete's saying that they're going to be able to wear a mask.
Right.
So who's going to enforce that they're wearing masks?
The ones that you're representing that you're saying are concerned and don't want this to go out.
But who's going to be in charge of that?
The ones that you're, that you're saying that we represent everybody, so there's got to be people who really strongly feel like they want to wear a mask to protect because they're not vaccinated, so they're going to wear a mask, because masks work, and they're going to protect them from-
Enforce, little Johnny wears a mask, Suzie doesn't wear a mask, are you wearing your mask going there?
Yeah, it's a choice.
It's their choice.
No, 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 what she's saying, though, is if it's a child-
The parents, obviously, will lose.
But who's going to enforce it at school, because then it's our liability.
You send him with a note, make sure he's wearing his mask.
Right, I think that's possible.
Yeah.
We talked about that, actually. We talked about the idea of the young ones having the teachers, we would never be a guarantee that, to the family, that we'll do our best to ensure that so-and-so wears, wears his or her mask.
I mean, I think even now outside, I see kids who, I go, like, for me, I'm like, oh my God, why, they suppose, that's their choice, they want to wear it.
You know, you know, for, for almost the entire pandemic, we heard that the, one of the main reasons why we were doing social distancing and masking of kids, because kids were always thought to be low impacted by this, was because they can come home and give it to grandma and grandpa, come home and give it to the adults. Well, now the adults are vaccinated or can be vaccinated, and if they don't, that's their choice. And now we're kind of moving the goalposts, now we're flipping it around and saying now it's about the kids. But it was always about protecting, the kids were always sort of not really at risk.
That's how I feel, too, it's about keeping schools open.
And I don't know why we're so sure that we're not going to, they're ahead of us, right? They, if you go back a few weeks ago, a couple, whatever it was, two months ago, they were only at 20 years-
Who's that, who's they?
England.
England.
Right, this is how it's spread, right?
What's their vaccination rates?
What?
I'm just curious, because I don't know the da-
Yeah, are they, they're behind us in vaccinations.
Because places in, in Europe, I know, Germany, one of them, way behind.
Right, no, there are some, right.
They don't have it.
No, but my, that's not even, I'm not talking about the vaccination, because I don't-
No, but I'm wondering if that's the reason it's gotten so out of control. Like, when you talk about, look at our little community and what's happening here.
No, they lifted their mask mandates.
Right, but is it because the, why there's such an uptick of it because the vacs, there are not enough people vaccinated?
Yeah, so my understanding, Teres, my understanding is, is the areas of the world, and of the country, this country as well, that are being most impacted by the variant, the, the, um, Delta variant, are the places that are least vaccinated. So there's a correlation between where the Delta variant is really hitting hard and where there's the least amount of vaccinations. So, and that's true of America, too, there's certain parts of the country that are getting hit harder by the Delta variants because they're not as vaccinated. So I think that's true around the world, certainly with India, for sure.
Right, but that's my point, that's why the school is shut, because the kids were not vaccinated.
But we're, we're 68% vaccinated.
We are not, Pete, listen.
Yes, we are, yes, we are, the area is, but-
K through five, or K through the half of things are not vaccinated. I don't want the schools to shut down.
No, no, my point is that if a significant portion of the population is vaccinated, it affects the entire population.
The kids should, if they have the vaccine, why are you wearing the vaccine?
The reason I didn't send my kid to school was because of the mask wearing, because it was for her emotional- No, it was, she couldn't function doing it, she tried it, it didn't work. For how many other kids is that the case? So what difference does it make? Because then those kids might have to stay home anyway. Like, I may not send my kid to school, say mask.
Can I just say something, though?
No, but I think that if you are vaccine eligible, you shouldn't have to wear a mask, that's my point.
I know, but what if people don't want to? You don't want to impose that on people either. Let it be a choice, mask or not, I know, but let it be a choice, mask or no mask.
But then you're taking, all right.
We're giving, to me, it's more damaging than closing, than closing down.
Yeah, but Teres, just one other point I wanted to make, though, is I think one of the, one of the flawed logic of all this is that we're treating school like it's this isolated bubble, and it's not part of the greater community. Like, when you say 50% of, of the school population is not vaccinated, true. But what I'm saying is that 68% of the greater population is, and that has a residual effect in a positive way on the entire school population, because they're not going, they're less likely to go home and get it. Most of the kids that we probably, that probably had it in our district, didn't get it from the district, most likely, they got it from outside. So if outside of the school is 68% vaccinated as a whole, that's going to have a positive effect on the entire school district. And conversely, if you're going to have the strict mask protocol in school for six hours, and then it's not going to be enforced elsewhere because the state's not, then what's the point? It's, it's, all we're doing is weakening the value of, or the experience that our kids have while they're in school, having to wear these masks, with no, a mask, to me, I don't want to debate whether masks is good or not, but to me, if they were effective, they were effective as part of a broader strategy, a layered strategy, with social distancing, with X, Y, and Z, and it doesn't really make a lot of sense to do it in one little section of the population for six hours. It makes sense when you're doing it maybe at mass, with social media, with social distancing, and working from home, all those stuff together, all that stuff together, cut down on the spread. But now you're basically going from trying to do what was a carpet bombing strategy to, to, to a guided missile strategy, that doesn't work, it's not going to work this way.
Pete, to say, I, you know, to say that 50% are vaccinated, they're not, right?
50% of who now?
No, we're talking about a school population, okay? So if 50% are vaccine eligible, and of those 50% that are vaccine eligible, only 50% have the vaccine, that means 25% of your community are vaccinated, your school community.
Your school community.
Your school community.
The school community goes beyond the students, does it not?
Okay, but Pete, you're kind of contradicting yourself in a way. And I'm surprised, I'm surprised, because like, you know, being law enforcement, we, you should be used to being proactive. The, the fact of the matter is, you keep saying, well, you know, you keep saying, well, that's because they were vaccinated. I think what Teres is saying is that our K to five little ones have not been vaccinated. And so when, so if we go outside of our community, you're saying, oh, well, they got it because they went outside of the community, like, when we had, when it was like really off the chain, right? So they went outside of their community, right, but then they come home, right, and they bring it into their community. And then we have our little ones who their parents haven't had an opportunity, because it's not available to them. And I don't understand why we can't come to some sort of middle-of-the-road sort of agreement and just agree, okay, everybody can have a choice, but at least let, let that, that population become vaccine eligible, and give their parents the opportunity to do that. They're, believe it or not, outside of this room, there are a lot of people who are for masks, believe it or not.
And they can still, and they can put the masks on.
And they can keep the masks on.
And I know, I know that they are not represented here, but I also think, no, people may not have known, we're having this in, on, you know, off of a weekend in July, right? And so people may not even be aware, so we don't even, we haven't really even allowed more people to even come and even know this is going on, to even give their view, so it might-
Yeah, but Laura, you're not telling people that, that you have to take your mask off, otherwise you can't come in school. You're leaving it as a choice.
Not for, I, I feel like, I feel like, I feel like for our little ones, Cynthia, I love you, and I, and I respect you and all of that, but for our little ones, I feel like for those people who are not represented here tonight, to keep our school, wait, let me finish to keep our schools open, so that they don't have to go- Like, I wish everybody would get vaccinated, because I really don't like having to wear a mask. I got vaccinated in part because I'm tired of wearing a mask. I got my kids vaccinated because I'm tired of them having to wear a mask. I'm not thinking about myself, I'm thinking about those children who are not vaccine eligible.
And I am thinking about all kids.
Right, that's all kids, that's everybody. Well, we're, we only have a few, we only, but Cynthia, we only have a few people here. They don't represent everybody in our community, school community.
By giving them the choice, that represents everybody, give them the choice.
But when I say, I think that when we're dealing with a small, closed space within a classroom, I think that that's different, I think that that's very, very different. We're not talking about on the field playing soccer, we're not talking about the Yankee Stadium, we're talking about in rooms with the doors closed, we're talking about them being close together. We're talking about maybe they went into communities that had high rates of, of the Delta variant. I don't know, I just feel like until the parents have a choice of whether, what to do with that, and everybody gets that opportunity, I think just, we need to maintain what we've been doing, at least in that age group. And I think that's fair, that's not being mean, that's just being straight.
Why can't it be that you, like, we just follow the guidelines of you unmasking the vaccine?
Yeah, although I do think, I do think that, that I do think the state is going to push it back a little bit.
Hold on, that's, that's not the guidelines, though. The guidelines are, right now, masks for everybody. That's, that's, that's who we're, that's who we're fighting against.
To amend this, like, to amend this, I don't think the vaccination rates are so relevant to our community, school community, not global, like our general community. And I think that if we look globally, we see that schools are shut down because of positive Delta variants, and not the kids are dying from it, the schools are shutting down.
So I was accused of being contradictory, I don't think I was, maybe I wasn't explaining myself correctly. What I'm saying is that, I understand what you're saying, because you just mentioned, again, 50% of the school population is not vaccinated, I get it. What I'm saying is that the vaccination rate of the surrounding community that school districts in matters in terms of the risk that those kids, and vice versa, are at.
Well, like, it's layering protection, like, wearing a mask, like, social distancing, those are all mitigating factors that layer protection, right? That's, that is what it is.
That's, I, I guess I'm not explaining it right, but, but I'm just saying that I, I think to discount what the, what the vaccination rate is of our area, um, beyond the school district, is not valid to discount that, because it still means that our, our entire community beyond the school is heavily vaccinated, and that does have a positive effect on the school community as well, even if the school community is only 50% vaccinated. And again, the 50% that's not vaccinated, or is not eligible to be vaccinated, is the least vulnerable, the least susceptible to this virus.
Can I say something?
Yes.
So I just want to talk about the vaccines for a minute, because I keep on hearing that they're not, it's not important. Everything that I've read and heard, and everything I've listened to, has talked about vaccination rates, you know? So if an adult, if more adults are vaccinated, let's take the kids out of it, and they go to a store, they have a less of a chance, if a whole number of adults are vaccinated, of getting COVID-19 and giving it to anybody. Vaccination rate does matter, because vaccines, you're saying, do work. So they do work, I believe they work, too.
I'm not saying, like, Amy, this is like, it's not like Teres says the vaccines work.
I believe they work, and the thing is, is that it is keeping the numbers down, that's how we've gotten the numbers down. So I don't think that keeping out even adult vaccination rates, if, first of all, we're not making a decision, we're only advocating to the state, we are going to do whatever they say, no matter what. We're not going to be a renegade on that. It's just seeing if we can write a letter altogether.
But there is a strong possibility that they could kick it back. I know that in New Jersey, they are going to kick it back to the districts to make a decision.
It's good that we're starting to talk about this now, because it seems like, you know, people are going to be in different levels. But I do think that vaccination rate, in whatever we do, does matter.
Well, there are public schools that have had onsite, like Mamaroneck and Chappaqua, I think it was, or somewhere up there, they had like onsite vaccination sites, so, you know, to get things going and to, I think, what I was saying, Cynthia, is that the guidelines right now is that if you are vaccinated, you can unmask everywhere. That's what we should be doing, in my opinion.
We should saw that already, is what you're saying.
Exactly, like, if your daughter was vaccinated, I don't see why she had to sit home, and, you know what I mean? That, that was my point, and agreeing with you.
Yeah, I, I tried to get her to be a rebel and go in without it, but she wouldn't do it, you know?
She's kind of used to it now.
I said, just take it off.
She's like, no way, I'm not doing it, you can't think of it.
Look, I think at the end of the day, we all have the best interest of the kids in mind. I think it's a debate of whether or not keeping the mandates in place, to your point, I think, Teres, you feel it keeps kids in school longer. I think on the other side of the coin-
That is my goal, I do not want to remove anybody of, or hybrid.
Yeah, on the other side of the coin, I, I think I'm, I'm concerned about the, the quality of the education they're getting while we're here, the experience they're getting, and whether or not, and I'm not going to be dramatic about masks and how horrible they are, but I do think they, especially over time, the compound effect of them, is, is negative in a lot of ways. And I think, I don't think that the current state we're in in our area justifies it anymore as a mandate. It should be a choice, in my opinion, but, all right. Anyway, I don't know if there's any reason why we should discuss this anymore. Anybody have anything else they want to say? It's kind of, kind of going around in circles.
So, motion, or should we continue?
Yeah, I mean, I would say let's motion, because I don't, I haven't heard anything in terms of, um, any reason to table, really. Does anybody have a reason to table? You mentioned table.
I feel, I feel that we, we just don't know enough. I think that the state is going to make a decision one way or the other. So I don't understand why the resolution is even really at this point necessary, I feel like we need to-
I think the reason why we feel it's necessary, at least I do, is because I think we are, we feel with responsibility as representatives of this district, of the, of the kids that don't have a voice, they don't have a voice for themselves. They're the ones being sort of left behind, in my opinion, on this whole mask lifting thing. And I think we are in a position to advocate for, for our district and for them, if we feel that advocacy should be done. And I think, I know I do, I feel that way, so.
Well, I'm going to advocate for the ones who are not vaccine eligible and can't, and don't really have a voice in this matter. And I just wouldn't want any of our little ones to be, come, you know, sick and have any issues. I just, I just don't want that blood on my hands, I just don't, so. I feel like this should be tabled until we have more information for moving into the fall, to see what's going to happen, see if the, if the Delta virus, what is happening, since Laura did say it's the most contentious. I don't, I don't know, I don't know, I think that, I think that, I think that-
I also think it should be tabled, to be honest with you, because I don't think we've given the community enough time to voice their opinion. I think this went on-
We're not making the decision that unmask, we're making the decision-
But we're speaking on behalf of our community.
Right.
We're speaking on behalf of, it doesn't mean that it's going to happen, like, we're not doing anything.
Right, but we're writing a letter on behalf of our community, that we haven't heard from.
So let's vote on it, who's for and who's against, I vote, I say we vote on it.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, like, I'm, you know, I'm all for community input, but I think at some point, yeah, in the, in the, in the spirit of moving things forward, we are represented by the community, we do represent the community. When you can get more input, it's always great, but we did have the Health and Wellness Committee, you know, it met only three weeks ago. I don't think anything was going to change from now to then.
Was this resolution put out to everybody? Was this sent out to all of our community?
Yes, that's why they're here, yeah.
People who are here.
So people, so people who are on vacation, they, they can, because, I mean, our, our doctor of the whole district isn't here, because she's on vacation, so, you know.
Well, I mean, I, I kind of agree with the superintendent, there's a timeliness issue here, because this, these decisions are being made now. It's not, September's not that far away, so I think to table it and to wait until the next time we meet, which is, which is the middle of August, I mean, then what's the point at that point?
And like Pete said, it's like you can, you can change it, so it doesn't, if things change, we change. That's what we've been doing this whole year and a half.
Well, one, one positive thing about this is that I love that we had an opportunity to debate.
Yeah, that was great.
And it was so nice and civil.
Well, it's also odd that you've, it's, it's odd for this board to have been in disagreement, because it's, actually, I don't think it's happened yet.
Yeah, no, no, it happens.
So I'm, I'm going to motion for it, I'm going to put it forward, okay? So I already read it, so do I have a motion for this resolution? Laura, second, Cynthia, you want a motion?
No, sorry.
You're just messing with me.
I'm like, I'm just so tired of being like.
All right, we had our discussion.
We're not done yet.
We had our discussion, all in favor. Do you, do you need a, a separate, um, vote for dissent? No? Okay, okay, so the resolution passed. All right, we have one last item on the agenda, very quick, personnel recommendations, could we do it in a group? So, did you want to say something?
No, I think it's one person on it.
Okay, all right. Resolve that Board of Education approves personnel recommendation actions, items A through Y. Um, do we have a motion? Cynthia, second. Laura, any discussion on any of these items here?
I actually just have one question. Are we, um, there was something about JV cheerleading, so is varsity gone?
Yeah, I was actually gonna ask that question, too. I know we're appointing a second cheer coach, but it's listed as JV. Do we have a JV team, do we?
I believe that we wanted to have a JV team.
We only had varsity.
Right.
So is it either or?
It was, it was very big, the varsity team.
We had it in our, um, in our.
I don't know, that's what I was asking.
Well, I, I know oftentimes what happens is you, you appoint for each, you see what the turnout is. You see what you have, and then you pull one over as an assistant coach, yeah.
Right, right.
Oh, so that means now you're both.
Not enough interest.
I hope we have, I hope we have good interest. That would be nice to have a JV squad.
All right, all in favor? Okay. All right, and that brings us to.
What?
It's the end, right? All right, that brings us to our second recognition of the audience. I will say, um, before I give anybody a chance to speak, I, I'd prefer that you don't speak on this issue, if you can, because we've pretty much exhausted it already. Obviously, we've already, we've already, uh, voted on the resolution, so I, I'm not gonna prevent you from speaking about it, but in the interest of time, I think we've kind of beat this kind of to death, so, um, but I'm not gonna stop you. If you really want to say something about it, I'll let you, but I would prefer if we kind of steer clear of this topic for now. Um, anybody have anything they want to say? Second?
Pete, were we supposed to acknowledge the appointment?
Yeah, well, I don't, that's what I asked you.
We're supposed to acknowledge the appointment.
Oh, well, I had more than one, there's like A through Y, that I do, I.
Yeah, no, but she's here, so.
Oh, sorry.
She's sitting here, we like to.
I know, so patient.
I don't even know who she is.
You want to introduce yourself?
Hi, I'm Krista Miller, um, I'm a special education teacher for the ABA 3D 5 class.
And she was with us last year, so we know that she's, um.
Welcome.
She did a great job last year.
Thank you.
So we're, so. And thank you for showing up and sitting through this whole meeting.
You deserve a round of applause for that, yeah, you're just sitting here through this whole thing.
If you show up, we'll, we'll call out your name and clap.
Well, just a forewarning, most of our board meetings are not this interesting. But, uh, welcome, congratulations.
Thank you for having me.
Yeah, okay. And that's it, so actually, I'm not gonna close the meeting, because we're going back to executive session.
Did you want to ask if anyone wants to come up?
I did, I asked, right? No takers on the, on the podium?
Thank you.
Okay. All right, um, so that's it, so I'm not gonna close, because we're gonna go on executive session. I need a motion to go on executive session. Teresa, second, Cynthia, all in favor?
And then we have to come back up here.
I don't know, we, we have to close it back out up here?
No, you're good.
Oh, good.
The executive session, we haven't closed it.
Oh, okay.
We're not gonna close it.
What about closing the public meeting, though?
No, we have to close executive session first, and then.
So we have to come back up here on that.
All right, we'll be quick, we'll be quick. Gary, we'll be quick, I promise.
Okay.
All right, um, so we're back, and we just finished our executive session. I need a motion to close the executive session. Cynthia, second, Teresa, all in favor? And that concludes our meeting, I need a motion to close out the meeting. Cynthia, second, Laura, all in favor? Okay, thank you very much.
Oh, sorry.